All right, good evening, everyone. It's March 21st at 6:00 PM and I'll call the Town Council meeting to order. Take a moment of silence to reflect on all those affected by the situation here and abroad happening. In accordance with that law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if there's anyone in the audience recording, if you could please identify yourself.
I don't see anybody, Mike.
Thanks, Don. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar for Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders for spending search provisions. The open meeting law, our first order of business this evening, we have three agenda items. A discussion pertaining to the advertising that the Edward County Council for Public Management will be conducting for the town manager. Ralph, I know you helped quite a bit. You started crafting a bylaw and I thought that the components to that bylaw pretty much coincide with our conversation this evening. So maybe you want to start off with some of the bullet points?
So, Mike, why don't we, why don't we just start off by the Charter? I can read in what Article 3 says and then we can take it from there.
Sounds great.
Okay, Article 3, Section 31 of the Home Rule Charter states, "The town manager shall be a person of proven administrative ability, especially qualified by education and training, with prior experience as a city or town manager, or an assistant city or town manager, or the equivalent public or private sector level experience. The town council may from time to time establish such additional qualifications as deemed necessary and appropriate." So, Mike, if I may, to me, I, I read that as being straightforward, it's black and white. And then after talking to some previous Charter Commission members, they felt it was gray and left some room. So, I mean, what I would look for is, you know, is there a minimum level of education that we're looking for? Is there a minimum qualification? I mean, I thought it basically said that you had to be a city or town manager or an assistant city or town manager. I was thinking the equivalent public or private sector level. So I'll start with public would be a mayor, maybe a deputy mayor. And again, I guess, I guess that's where we open it up to the council to, to see what qualifications we actually deem are required to be our next town manager.
Exactly, and, and you know, this is necessary too because the Collins Center is obviously going to be starting advertising shortly. And there might be components from tonight's meeting that myself and Mary will definitely want to be having a conversation with their representatives before that advertising goes out. So I'll open it up. Okay, that's great. Connor, I saw your hand first. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So I, I mean, from the beginning, kind of agreed with the more gray interpretation of that part of the Charter. And so I, I'd be more inclined to, to say that we have a preference for someone that has a degree in municipal management and/or someone who has many years of prior experience as a town manager, city manager. But I wouldn't necessarily be inclined to make it so restrictive that it has to be both of those exactly, especially since there's a lot of variations in titles that you could come across. There could be people that are town administrators, maybe not directly related to how our Charter lays out the roles and responsibilities. Because that's the other thing we have to keep in mind is that someone could be called a town manager elsewhere. But their Charter's definition of town manager is not necessarily the same as East Long Meadow's definition of town manager.
Marilyn?
To add to what Connor said, I don't dispute that. I, I think that there's a risk to making this too tight in terms of what we're looking for. However, I've struggled with this. I pulled out the position statement from several years, a few years ago, back in F1 and in 20, you know, when Mary was being considered for her position. And it said, preferred candidate should have a bachelor's degree, but master's was preferred. And then it talks about and experience, be either city-town manager, similar to what the Charter says. I think we need at least one of those criteria to be evident or supported by the candidate. Either you have a strong education in public administration, but you've worked in other areas, or you're a CEO of a company, or a vice president of nursing at the hospital, or some other management position that supports the experience piece. I, I think we get into trouble if we start to dilute both ends of, you know, what we're looking at, education and, and experience. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mike. I would echo both Connor and, and Marilyn. And I'm trying to underscore the, the reality that whomever gets this position is the CEO of East Long Meadow. And that said, I think we have to give credence to the magnitude of the position by being straight out and saying, a bachelor's degree is required, however, a master's degree in public administration, or equivalent work experience is preferred, which is pretty much a hybrid of what remarked, of what Marilyn and Connor are saying that. If we make the educational piece tight and the work experience tight, we lose the wiggle room. But I don't, I see us in this opportunity of searching to really need to come away with someone who has the advanced degree under their belt.
Quick question, Mike, through the chair. When we're talking about experience, we are stressing the experience as a town manager or town administrator, correct?
Is your question directed at the entire council?
Yes, I just want to make sure, I mean, from what Connor, Marilyn, and Kathy have said, I, I agree with. I just, when Kathy mentioned experience, I just want to make sure we're saying equivalent experience as a town administrator or town manager. Is, is that what we're stressing?
If I may, I was saying that, you know, at least there has to be a strength in one of the two areas. Either you have a master's in public administration, perhaps you've been working in a planning department. But you have a strength in your education, or you have a bachelor's in business and your strength has been, you've been assistant town manager to the city of Ludlow or the town of Lud. I mean, I'm just using that as an example. You know, that's how I was looking at it, that you, if we start to relax and not look at the strength of either the educational piece or the, or the experience, then we're, we may not, we may not end up with a strong CEO of East Long Meadow.
Correct.
It's a connotation enough, but what I'm hearing so far, and I believe everyone agrees, this is about balance. We don't, we don't want to make the requirements so stiff that we're not attracting anyone, but yet we want them to have an educational experience and the, and the skill set of the job that we're advertising. Connor, I did see your hands up earlier.
Mike, yeah, I was just gonna say, when it comes to the experience part, it's like, sure, there could be that ideal candidate that we could prefer that has like actual specific town manager experience on top of an education or something. But I wouldn't necessarily want to limit our definition of experience just to town manager because there could be someone that has some other really great title that could mean a lot to the town. But we don't know what that is yet until we search.
Marilyn, can I go to Don here and I'll come right over to you?
Just again, just to put our history in perspective, our first town manager was the Connecticut equivalent of a town administrator, I believe, was called like a first selectment, or is that what the position was?
Yes.
Of course, you know, Mary has had experience as the town administrator of Hamden and before that, the parking authority. And, and of course, you know, it was an attorney. So, but at least his, you know, the two town managers we've had served in somewhat of an analogous position in their, in previous, in other communities. So just, you know, that, that's just the pattern we've been going with and I think, I think it's worked.
Marilyn?
I'm going back to the statement from our previous search for our second town manager. And as I said, it, for education, it asks for a bachelor's degree, master's preferred in public administration or related field and experience as a city-town manager or assistant city-town manager or equivalent with demonstrated skills and abilities in municipal finance, communications, personal administration, time management, economic development, and community planning. So that's, that covers a wide range of, of experience that I think the council could consider in vetting a candidate.
To tag on to Marilyn, and I think it's essential that the topic she just read should appear in the job description, that the, the ideal candidate has had to have some demonstrated experience in a variety of those topics.
Mike, if I may, I, I, I tend to agree with that. That pretty much covers everything we're looking for.
Then I, I would ask, you know, this would be guidance and direction for the Collins Center pertaining to advertising. Would we all agree on that? Some of the components are going to want in their ad. Ralph?
So, Mike, if I'm understanding correctly, what we're actually saying is that an educational experience would be at a minimum a bachelor's degree. A master's degree would be preferred. But the dead minimum would be a bachelor's degree. And if I understand correctly, we would prefer it in public administration to where someone, a candidate may have the bachelor's degree in public administration, but maybe not quite as much experience, where someone would, or maybe someone had a master's degree with less experience and someone with a bachelor's degree had more. I mean, how do we get that, the balance between the two without narrowing it down too much?
Yeah, that was, if I may, Mike, that was going to be my question too of trying to keep the language with, I think, what we're thinking, but not making it too restrictive in how we word it. Because even just in Mary's example, it's like if her degree was not necessarily public administration. Specifically, we don't necessarily want to say bachelor's in public administration. I don't know how we say that.
I think it was stated that in public administration or a related field or closely related field or something like that.
That's exactly what it says.
But that opens it up again to, well, what do we consider a closely related field to a public administration? I mean, is, and again, I don't know all the different types of bachelor's degrees that are out there.
You know, I, if I may, Michael?
Please.
Okay, you know, clearly, the ad, the advertising will attract a certain caliber of candidate. The, you know, whether it be education or experience or both. And I'm sure everyone that applied for the previous go-around looked at the words and felt that they fit somewhere in the advertisement. And, and I think that's fine. I guess it's, it's truly up to this, to the search committee and then the council to appreciate what is, what, what they're offering and how they can make it work with a town manager position here in East Long Meadow. You know, I, I think it's very difficult to know what kind of candidate we're going to be interviewing. And we already saw what, you know, the, the three qualified candidates that we interviewed previously. However, there was no administrative experience and no public administration education. So I, that I think made it somewhat of a rub. And so the answer is, I guess it all depends on who we talk to and what, how they can convince us that they can do the job. I, I don't know how else.
If I, if I may, Mike, we're gonna get, we're gonna get all kinds of candidates. Some are gonna be qualified, some are not. It comes down to this, to the selection committee and to community, and to the Collins Center to weed those out. And as long as the Collins Centers, in my belief, understands what we are looking for, then that will bring the, bring the best people forward for us.
I was just gonna add, prior to your speaking, Sid, that we do have three vetting processes. It starts with, right now, we're just trying to fine tune the advertising to give the Collins Center a general idea on how to put the ad out there to solicit the candidates. Then they need to obviously clear the Collins Center, they need to work to get by the screening committee, and then ultimately the vote falls on the town council. So we don't want to be over restrictive and we don't want to be under restrictive. We're looking for that balance. And if we want to start trying to dovetail it in the, in the form of a motion, then I believe that wants everyone comfortable with the language.
So, before we go on to a motion, I just want to point out, through reading everything from the Collins Center, they turn over all the resumes to the search committee. And it's up to the search committee only to decide who they think would be qualified and who isn't. The Collins Center doesn't, at least from everything I've read, doesn't weed through and say, well, this one's no good, but that one is. You know, they may try and help them and steer it a little bit during their meeting, but it's really up to the screening committee to make the decision. So obviously, they're an important part of this. I just think as a council, we should give them some, some guidance and say, hey, listen, we don't want anyone with less than a bachelor's. I mean, I would prefer someone with past administrative or manager experience. I, I think that's where we've been. And if we step back from that now, I'm just concerned that we're taking a step backwards. Just my thought. Thank you.
I see a couple of hands up, but I did see Connor, your hand was up first.
Thanks, Mike. I was actually just gonna, gonna echo what Ralph was thinking, that this may not necessarily be something that we have to get overly specific in the, the posting about that, but maybe it's more of something that we add to the committee charge for our screening committee on what types of qualifications should be bubbled up first.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. Connor stole what I was gonna say. I was gonna reference the screening committee charge where we could certainly fine tune it for, for our council and perhaps add a, a sentence on the qualifications that we would prefer.
So Marilyn, I, I know you had the document that we had posted, I, I think, the last one. Could you read that job description once more? I mean, I think it hit pretty much on everything we were looking for.
Okay, all right.
If you don't mind, Mike.
No. East Long Meadow is seeking an experienced, enthusiastic, and community-focused leader with excellent communication and collaboration skills to serve as its second town manager. Preferred candidate should have a bachelor's degree, master's preferred in public administration or a related field and experience as a city/town manager or assistant city/town manager or equivalent with demonstrated skills and abilities in municipal finance, communications, personnel administration, time management, economic development, and community planning. Candidates should be, should have a proven record of municipal leadership and team building, be a self-starter, and be able to build cooperative relationships with appointed slash elected officials, residents, and the town employees. That's it. Okay.
Okay, I think that that's a good foundation and now if we can probably fine tune that into a motion, that we'd be able to put a motion on the floor and, and vote on that. And that would be guidance for the Collins Center moving forward. Anyone else have any recommendations, other recommendations, Kathy?
I appreciate the specificity of that description that Marilyn just wrote. But I would caution that if that isn't the description from the Collins Center in its first relationship with us, that we essentially then are borrowing the language and the product from
You're right.
a different search. So I would just, the, you know, the content of it is absolutely fine. But I would caution against borrowing another agency's product verbatim.
That's why I was alluding to the fact of making modifications to that.
Right.
This council moving forward to the agency that we've engaged with.
So as a whole, I mean, do we generally agree as a whole that we take that information that's contained in there and use that as an advertising? And then, then that portion's done. I mean, obviously, the Collins Center will do a, a wordsmith on it and put it into their, their own format. But, but the content, I, I think that's pretty much what we're looking for. And then maybe if we voted on that, got that out, then we could look to the screening committee and what we're gonna tell them exactly that we're looking for. Does that make any sense?
That's me. I mean, the first order of business is to, you know, expedite the, the search is to, if already engaged in business with the Collins Center, is basically to give a marching order. And whatever we lay out tonight or agree on, we can still have a second look at it before they advertise. And I can certainly ask them to put it, put it back in front of myself, Mary, both of us, or the entire council.
Mike? I, thank you. I think in the effort to expedite, because the clock is ticking here, whatever is wordsmithed should just, at some point, boil down to you, Mary, and Ralph. I don't think if we, it's, to me, we're just elongating the whole process if we wait till our next council meeting to approve that.
So what, what I'm hearing is the document that Marilyn read is, is a basic foundation. And we can, we can either fine tune it a little bit further this evening, if that's the council's pleasure, or myself and Mary can take a look at it and work with the Collins Center and take their recommendations prior to posting it.
I would.
Question with that, Mike? I was just gonna ask, if we were to move forward with yourself and Mary fine tuning the wording with the Collins Center, would we wait to vote on that until after it's fine tuned? Or would we vote to say that we agree with the spirit of what Marilyn had read from our past one, so long as there's no substantive changes moving forward?
Ralph? Ralph, I saw your hand up.
So I was just moving around, but I, I would agree. So as long as there's no major changes to it, I, I think we take a vote now and say, hey, using this as an outline, wordsmith it, and that way there, the Collins Center can get moving on the advertising. Like I said, if there's any major changes that have to be done, you know, then maybe shoot it out to the council. But I don't see any major changes. I just see reformatting it into a different procedural wording.
The demographics, the demographics are there. We could certainly take a look at it. Kathy, how did you feel about that?
I, I would, will be echoing what Ralph just said. I think substantive changes would need to come back to us. But I, we're all in consensus right now that what we need is what we've discussed thus far tonight. And we need to get that wordsmithed and then rely on you and Mary to convey that to the Collins Center and, and not belabor the process another month.
I, I would agree. And I, I do see everyone's hands up and everyone's gonna get an opportunity to speak. But I'm gonna go to my left and start with Sid.
All right, I, I agree with everything. Let's send this in with the spirit of it. We don't want to be sitting here next year, the, the council doesn't, with Mary sitting there looking really excited about this meeting. So in, in the spirit of it, let's, we, we trust the president. Let's get this done and get it out for the Collins Center.
Thank you, Sid. Don?
Yeah, basically, a motion could be structured. Now, I'm not gonna make a motion right now because I don't remember exactly what Marilyn said. But it could be for a motion that, that, after discussion with the council, the council wants to offer to the Collins Center for informational purposes only. And then mention, mention those as bullet points. And then at the end say, and, you know, basically including, but not limited to these following bullet points. That way, it's, it's just a guideline and, and we're not taking what that says as verbatim. But at least it affords them an idea of what has worked in the past and also something they can try to work with moving forward.
Thank you, Don. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to add that whatever we end up with, that information should then be transferred to the charge for the screening committee, so they know what we're looking for. Okay.
Mike, just have one question. Although I know the other company put this together when, when Mary was hired, isn't this, doesn't this actually belong to the town of East Long Meadow? We paid for it. It's our publication. We paid for the publication to go in the paper. So where would they come with any, any rights to it? We bought the rights.
I, I also want to add, if I may, what I did not see, the publication that went out for the start of this, the previous search that we just put on hold, is the language that even the same? I don't, I don't know what we, what, what ended up being in the actual advertisement. That would help to see, you know, what was at, what was originally advertised.
Yeah, I, I don't have that document in front of me, but I guess as long as we know what we want to do going forward right now. But that, if we could put that in the form of a motion, then we could vote on it. I, I think the basic demographics are laid out. And I'm hearing that once, once we have that motion and vote on it, that myself and Mary will, review it along with the Collins Center. And if there isn't any changes that are detrimental or have changed in meaning of the document, then we can go forward with that. Does anyone else have any other questions? Or does somebody want to take a shot at putting that in the form of a motion?
Try. So I move that we authorize the council president and Mary to fine tune the language in the spirit of the council's, what's the right word? what's the right word? Preference in the new town manager to have a bachelor's degree, master's preferred in public administration or related field of experience as a city town manager or assistant city town manager or equivalent with a background in municipal finance, human resources, time management, economic development, community planning. And having a record of municipal leadership.
I'll second.
I guess I'll have to ask Jackie, be able to get that? You know, we got, we got if we have to review it, we go over that motion a couple of times.
The words.
Connor, could you send that to me? What you're just read? Did you write it down? Alright, I'll get it. I got most of it.
I mean, to me, it is being taken, so.
Yeah.
So.
So we, alright, I was gonna say, we do have a motion on the floor. We have a second discussion. We'll start with Ralph.
So Marilyn, does that pretty much hit on all the aspects that you outlined?
Connor has an amazing memory. Yes, yes, it does.
I'm good then.
I have notes here too, and I believe all the basics are covered. But we are in discussion here. Anyone else have any other discussion pertaining to the motion? I don't see any hands up. So we'll start up in the corner here. Roll call vote. Don Anderson?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. So the second item on the agenda is discussions pertaining to any additional language necessary for clarification pertaining to the article, article three, town manager section. I'm open to any discussion that we want to have. I kind of believe these two subject matters were dovetailed together. And if everyone's comfortable with the motion, it kind of presented, covering both aspects of tonight's agenda. Ralph?
So Mike, will that, will that be our charge to the screening committee? That, that's what we're looking for? Or are we gonna be a little bit more tight and say, hey, we want them to definitely have a minimum of a bachelor's degree, past experience? Or are we just gonna use?
Myself, I kind of feel like we can, we can address that after myself and Mary have a chance to actually talk to the Collins Center and figure out their, their path going forward. I think, I think tonight was essential because we were able to now give them direction with an ad and get that out there and start compiling candidates. And we can refine, you know, the marching orders for the search committee with help from the Collins Center once, once after some time comes. Any, any other thoughts on that?
Just one, Mike. That was gonna be my question was, so would our next meeting then be going through that draft screening committee charge to fine tune that as well? Because I know that there were a few corrections I'd like to see on that document.
I, I believe if we need to have a special meeting prior to, to our next council meeting, so that we're not slowing this process down, that we would certainly do that. I'm, I'm thinking really, I'd rather, I, I myself would like to have a conversation and we planned on doing that, myself and Mary talked about that today with the agent from the Collins Center and, you know, get their, their viewpoints, strengths, whatever, whatever direction they can give us to help us moving forward with the search. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. With respect to the screening committee charge that we all received in email, I think it was just today. That was an example of a charge that was fitted for another community. That wasn't even drafted for us. It was just an example of something that we might be able to fashion for ourselves. So I have a number of changes that I would want to make too, Connor. So I just wanted to add that. It's not carved in stone.
And thank you. I would myself, that's why I'd rather talk about the screening committee. Their charges going forward. Myself and Mary spent some time on the phone this afternoon as well talking about that. So we have time to do that. I would, I want to, like I said, give the direction to the Collins Center so they can get the advertisement out there and see what, what level of interest we have. And then we'll work on our screening committee. And the objective is that this council wants that screening committee. Connor?
Uh, just a question on the timeline. How long does the Collins Center expect that the application period, like from the advertisement would be open? Like, is it?
That's from past experiences, but I have not had a conversation and with our agent from the Collins Center. That question can be taken under advisement. I can certainly get it answered once, once we pass along what we, what we accomplished this evening and any other questions that anyone else might have. Get that, get those answers from our agent. Marilyn?
Um, we all received the draft or either a copy of the, the service agreement, and the very last page gives sort of a rough schedule of the lineup of how things would play out. And, you know, as soon as, it, it doesn't say specifically that two weeks we'll be advertising, but clearly within, within the second month, the screening committee is busy at work, so I imagine it will go pretty quickly.
Well, I can certainly ask for a timeline of, you know, the chain of events. How long are they gonna leave the advertising out there? When are they gonna close the process? How quickly they go through them, make sure that they meet the minimum qualifications that our council decided on this evening? In the meantime, we'll start picking those that will serve on the screening committee. But I can ask for, like I said, a chain of events and dates and dates that we can expect to achieve working through the process. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. All of that was really just to, to ask if we probably should plan on a meeting prior to our next April 12th one. Mainly just because if Marilyn pointed out.
We will, we'll have time to post it, but until I can get those answers, you know, the questions answered from, like I said, the agent from the Collins Center who I have not had in conversation with. I'm gonna, I'll speak to Mary tomorrow. We'll have that conversation with our representative and you know, we'll be up, I, I believe we can set a meeting, you know, anytime, once, once I can be able to answer the questions, to, to get the information from the Collins Center.
Yeah, that sounds good. We don't have to pick the date and time now. I just wanted to make sure we were under agreement that we should have another one. That's all.
Yeah, we're not, nobody's looking to slow the process down here. We'll move as quick as the Collins Center needs it to move. We, we certainly won't be delaying the process. We're looking to expedite. Mary, do you have anything to add? In other words, you'll, myself and you will have this conversation with Mary, when I say Mary, I believe Mary is the agent that we'll be working with, with the Collins Center. It'll give us a lot more direction and question the notes that I made from the meeting. I will be able to answer that once I'm able to communicate with Mary from the Collins Center. Mary, does that make sense to you?
It all makes sense, Mike. The lady's name is Mary Icardi, and I have had one or two very brief conversations with her, and I think they'll expedite this and, and get responses. She did ask that you, at, at least you and perhaps me have a joint conversation with her after tonight's meeting and just kind of give them the groundwork for what the council has decided is most important to it. So and, you know, they've done this multiple times before with other communities, so I think that they will expedite the process. I think that I think they say generally three to four months, but I don't know that it necessarily has to take that long, but we'll see. You, I mean, haste makes waste, I suppose, in certain contexts, but we'll know a lot more after we have that conversation.
And that conversation can take place. I know my availability. I, I am hoping for a conversation later this week. If it works for Mary, our manager, and Mary from the Collins Center, then we'll have, we can have directions by the end of the week. And it certainly won't slow the process down because they need to, you know, obviously do the advertising and start compiling the list prior to those resumes even being submitted to the state committee for review. So I think we're in pretty good shape. Anyone else have any other questions or?
Actually, Mike, I've got one. So reading through the documents, the Collins Center talks about having conversations with major stakeholders. I'm not quite sure who they're talking about. It sounds like they're gonna maybe talk to town employees or, I, I don't know who I would consider a major stakeholder to get a general feel for what the town's looking for, for, for their next town manager. And I just found that a little strange, major stakeholders. I mean, anyone have any thought as far as you know, what they mean when they say that or who they've talked to in the past or? I don't know.
They're in constant communication with people. Obviously, people's lives change on a day to day basis. And maybe they know, have information about somebody that might be well suited for the town, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna guess at what the interpretation is, but that will be a question. I wrote that down and I'll ask them for clarification when myself and Mary check in. Did I see your hand up, Marilyn? Are you?
Oh, it's just, thank you, Mike. I was just thinking that previous searches, the consultants spoke to department heads. I remember that. And at least I, that was one piece of, and certainly their stakeholders, and they're not the only ones, but an important piece in terms of this decision. So maybe that's what they're referencing.
Okay.
I hope that covered the the basis for the, our second agenda item this evening. I believe it does, if everyone's comfortable with that, we can move to the last and final segment of our agenda this evening. Is it okay to move on? I'll just obtain a motion for adjournment then.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
If you have a motion in the second, we'll roll call vote again. Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Sid? Take that as a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, I'm showing the adjourning at 6:44. Thank you all for your time this evening. Once myself and Mary have a conversation with the Collins Center, we'll be getting that information. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mary.